All right. All right, well, welcome to the workshop for the five-year capital improvement plan. So, thank you, Megan. I know you've gone through and input the results that you received, so let's kick it off. I know that it's organized right now. Well, keep me honest here. It's organized right now, first in order of items that as a select board, our ratings were in agreement. And then, everything else, correct?
That's correct. So, the items in green are items that you all agreed on in terms of their ratings. And then, we did the next column over from that is the majority, so like for dingy docs, four of you rated that as a one. And then, there was a three, so that fell into the one category. And I did that all the way through.
So, the columbarium is the one on here that I'm curious about, because it says underway. Which, it's not really underway, right? I mean, it's, we've been setting some reserves aside. And as I indicated in my email back to you, Megan, I think I copied everybody in on that. The it's sort of an expensive project. When I came on the select board, I thought it was just a given that we, a business case had been made for it. Somebody had decided that they could pay its way. This was well worth doing. But as I've learned a little bit more, when I've asked questions about it, the investment committee who has money that could be used for this has asked for a business case. And none has been provided so far. So, I guess I'm I guess I'm curious about why this is designated as underway. And then, a bigger question, but it doesn't have to be taken up by tonight. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, I would concur there that it was understanding that we had raised so much already and had it in reserve. And that Bill had contacted the investment committee and talked to them, and apparently there was money that we could use to finalize the dollar value needed for the purchase of the columbarium. I didn't know about any other types of material needed.
Well, I think, and Megan, you'll have to keep me honest, because I think you probably have the latest and greatest, but wasn't it the investment committee had asked for kind of the overall plan, if you will, of what would be sold, what, when, etc., before they released any funds?
That's correct, because the money, that's it. So, basically, you'd be using money out of the cemetery investment. And that money is really only there for perpetual care of the lots that are sold and of the cemeteries, not for new construction at the cemeteries. So, it was a way in which we could get the structure built, but that those funds would have to be paid back. So, the investment committee wanted some sort of like payback plan, business plan, something that would show when we could expect those funds would go back into the investment, that it wasn't going to be just a withdrawal and then no payback.
And was that on, was that in the hands of Linda Greenlaw to complete?
Cemetery committee, yeah.
Okay. And I know the cemetery committee hasn't met for, I think, ages, because they weren't doing in-person and they couldn't do Zoom. So
I think that's actually one of the committees you ended up dissolving.
Yeah. So, I guess what do we have to do? Because I think that's a great point, Denise, and I saw your email, and I didn't respond, because I figured we would talk about it tonight. Is, I mean, we, obviously, that's something that we need. We've been talking about it for a long time. Obviously, it's going to repay itself when we sell the spots on the columbarium. So, what, what do we need to push that through? Megan, John, anyone?
Well, in my two cents worth, I think you'd have to figure out what you were going to charge for each individual portion. And then, times however many portions we have, and that will give you an idea of what the payback is. You know, and obviously, it's not going to happen all at once, but you'd have an idea of what the total payback would at a time yet to be determined.
So, not only would we have to pay back for the cost of constructing, whatever we take out of the investment, there also has to be some sort of perpetual care assigned with that as well, because it's going to have long-term maintenance and upkeep, which would keep in line with what that investment was actually created for.
Okay, so who fit, whose, whose plate does this fall on to figure out all of that? The perpetual care, the payback, the price that we would charge?
Sorry.
My thought would be, it would be back to
To John, who's the cemetery sexton?
Well, I mean, you don't have a cemetery committee anymore.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, and I, and I, just to chime in on this, I mean, I think, you know, Lynn and I have had a number of talks about the columbarium and the need for it and the plan behind it and what it takes to move this forward. She'd, I'd asked that we sit down with the company who effectively constructs these. I guess there's a company that comes around, and this is what they do. And to sit down and explain the process, you know, there are design decisions to be made to make sure that what you're building is something that is this may seem trivial to just bring this up, but make sure it's not dated. So, which, you have to think perpetually, right? You know, you have to think forever, so to try to find something that will last the test of time and, and through the time that you'd use that site, so we'd, we've had that conversation and it asked, you know, we sit down and talk with them, because we do need, we need some, I need some firm details as to where that goes. As I said, I understood that there was a financing mechanism we could employ. But I, we need the plan. You know, what does that building look like? You know, there is a location. I, I think they've circled, circled on the map. But we need to go beyond that to
So, so this is just another off-the-cuff thought. You know, this is becoming more of a bother than it's worth. I mean, we should have one. It was my belief when Bill was there, it was already taken care of. And the money that we're talking isn't that much. Is it like thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, Megan?
Last I heard, it was a hundred plus thousand.
Well, I mean, we have a fair amount in a reserve for it now, I think.
Well, I'm actually thinking, I'd like to understand better what this is really all about, and are we sure there is a market for it? I mean, how many people want to end up in a little drawer versus how many want to end up? I don't know. I just, I, I feel like it is a lot of money. I understand we've reserved, put some of it in reserve, but I wouldn't be opposed to taking it back out of reserve and using it for something else if if it turns out that this is like pie in the sky that some columbarium company sold us on. And it turns out, maybe in Rockport, this isn't what we're all wanting. I mean, I don't know how much room is left at Seaview. I don't know.
I think that's, that's some of the challenge, right? So, we had to put the moratorium on Seaview that only Rockport residents could be, could buy plots in there. And I think this was an option to try to be able to open that back up. But I, I think you're right, Mark. It sounds like what we thought was done for planning probably hasn't really been done for planning. And that, while it's probably a good idea, is it is it something we'd make our money back on? Do we have space in other cemeteries within Rockport that people could utilize? So, I agree. I think we need to look at that.
We really haven't made our money back on anything with the cemeteries. I mean, the money that's been paid fifty is still maintaining that same lot. And it costs much more today, so you know, we're not really making money on anything that's there. You know, and I think that getting a better understanding of trends. I mean, I, I do some part-time work with a local funeral home, and it would benefit us to reach out to them, not just listen to whomever. You know, because I, I believe that there are many more cremations. And I don't know, is everybody has a plot? Or wants a plot? But we should reach out to other people in the profession to find out what the trends are. So
So, Mark, you might do that, Mark, at least with your contacts?
Well, I mean, you know, I'd be a little biased. I, I think that, I think there's a trend that is headed that way.
Okay.
With far more cremation. But it's just
Just because you get cremated doesn't mean you want to end up in a little drawer in a building.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, cremation sounds like scattering your ashes in the beautiful wilderness where you love to spend time. You know, I mean, it, cremation allows for, who knows?
You know, I, I guess I, you know, I've, I have an opinion on it. I just think that it's best. I mean, Julie Clements was on the cemetery committee. And she's also, you know, part of Long Funeral Home. She might be somebody that would be contacted by Jonathan, because I do do some work for them. And he might be able to gain a better understanding of it. You know, and on the other, and, and it wasn't a hundred thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. And I think we had half of it or darn near half of it. And, you know, if we're going to go forward with it, and we don't want to jump through all the hoops. And it's, and it's worth our while after we've done some homework with, with those that are in the business. You know, there's always the option of finalizing the remainder of that out of undesigned fund balance, or whatever it's called these days.
Yeah, I'm just not, right now, I don't, in terms of all the things this town needs to think about and take care of, if we still have plots at Seaview, which I think we do, I'm not sad that Camden residents don't, can't get a plot, right? I mean, I and I'm not, I don't want to be short-term about it if there's a case to be made. That's fine, I'm
I think during, during the last two years, two-year budget cycles, we as a board have been in favor of it.
Well, I didn't understand that it wasn't really thought out yet. I thought that when I came on the board, that a business had been made. People who knew this area knew that there was a demand for buying little drawers.
We, we were in favor.
And we haven't really done that.
We were in favor of it to the point where we set money aside. How's that? We may not have known
I went along with it, because I assumed it was a decision a prior board had made with cremation. And what I'm understanding now is that isn't really the case, that a lot of I don't really know what, what the background for it is. But I'm learning a little bit more now, which makes me less, want to know more, want some more due diligence on it. That's all. I'm not opposed to it. I just think that before we start sending more money aside for this, I mean, when I mention it to residents, they're a little skeptical that people I mean, I don't know, it starts to sound very commercial cemetery-like when you talk about something like this, but I don't have the background. I just assumed the business case, if you will, had been made, and it sounds like we haven't, we don't know even how much we charge for it, or what, how we pay back what we're spending on it.
Right, which is what I think prompted the investment committee to say, yes, we have funding you could borrow, but we want to know the particulars. We want to know what you're charging, what the payback's going to be, how long it's going to take, and I think that's where it stalled right there.
Yeah.
And I think as far as maintenance that Megan had alluded to, I mean, you know, you're, there is no there is no maintenance of the actual structure itself. Material it's made of will last, from what I understood, several decades. But, you know, there's no mowing to be done. There's nothing really beyond buying it, putting it in place. So
Well, I, I would expect, just to, to help to maybe talk about this and, and to not have to I, I think I would expect that the next step before this would go much further than where it is. It's going to have to come back to the five of you. And, and again, my six, the six I wrote down was, was, I think, indicative of, there's been a process somewhat in play here, right? That's kind of teed this up to a point. But it's somewhat like the, the stove at the, at the Opera House, where there's been money set aside, there's a way to get there. But we haven't, no, there's no John Hancock's, there hasn't been any, you know, all in favors at this point, so there's still, there's still a chance to go a different direction if the, if the town so wished. But, but there is there is some momentum in place to get there, but that still requires, in this case, the four or five of you to say, yes, we agree, this is a direction. You know, this is the plan we want to pursue. So, I, I guess, when I write six down, I don't necessarily look at that as it's all over and done, the, the ink is drying on the signature. There's still time for, for input and, and, and a change. And so, I mean, I guess my suggestion perhaps is we could put this on your agenda in February. And we can see if we can get some, some real hard details before you just, to, to really suss out how, how you want to move forward.
That's what it would mean for me, is to know what, how it pays, how it pays its way.
And, and I would say, Jonathan, as well, when you're preparing your budget, worst-case scenario, and we don't go with the investment committee's direction. And we're still undecided, because we haven't got all the information or enough information. Put some money in the reserve for that. We can always cut it out. But if we don't cut it out, then we'll need to get less from the investment people, you know, so I guess march down that road would be my thought as far as putting more money in the reserve, which will mean less to be needed from the investment group, which will help bolster our letter to them when it comes for the payback.
I think we should sell it on a subscription basis and see if anyone's interested.
No, I mean, I, it, you know, I, I remember vaguely when this first came up, and, and I think you know, again, Julie had talked about it being on the cemetery committee. I've heard it talked about. I know Linda had talked about it. I don't know where it first was planted as a seed to grow into where it is now. I mean, there must have been a need, or the belief of there to be a need for it because of trends. But there again, I'm not in the business, so somebody else could probably better enlighten you.
I, I know it's, it's also trends, but it's also the condition of that section of the cemetery too, which I know, you know, like familiar with, it's, that area is, it's difficult to work with.
Is it the Metland area there, that's all this boggy?
Wetter on that side, yeah. Yeah, the, the roads are in some rough shape, and you know, it's, so it's getting everything up out of the ground. I mean, just to, to go, you know, there's a reason, you know, you look at some of these older cemeteries and how they're set up, they, you know, they get up out of the ground for mausoleums and the like. I think that's this is, this is a kind of highest and best use of, of a difficult section of, of that cemetery, but
And I can say that having been involved with burials down there, that there are, there are often times when you can't keep the hole pumped out fast enough. Because it is, I mean, you know, it's a great, it looks good when it's mowed. You ride down, you know, Baby Street, Russell Avenue, Chester, looks great, but it's wet. And this was probably an opportunity to still utilize the property. But anyway.
Yeah.
All right, so we agree, we need more discussion on that. Let's take an action item, John, to get that on the February agenda, so that we can have some more discussion about it. Um all right, how, how, John, Megan, how do you want to walk us through the rest of these?
Well, I, I just, so Megan and I met this afternoon to try to I, I just wanted to try to make this go as easily as possible, because it's a long list, you know, and we talked about this in December, and try to find a way to try to find a way so that we can take as many off the list as we can. Not that they're not priorities, but where there's agreement, okay, maybe, you know, and I think it's somewhat of a consent agenda in some way of saying, okay, are we all in agreement in these, that, that these are, these priorities are somewhat, okay, great, push that aside. Now, you know, next category, okay, where, where do these go? And try to, try to do that as opposed to try to, obviously, if we were to spend, we could spend probably an hour on some of these easily or more. You know? Right. The, the hope, I mean, the hope of this, just to kind of bring it back to the surface, is the hope of this is that out of this meeting, I will be able to, and Megan and I, when we get in the trenches, and we actually get in trenches to work on the budget, it's weird, I don't know why we do that, but we get in the trenches to do this, the, the budget work, we really know your priorities, so we know the answers to the test, you know? And, and make it a little bit easier in February and March. That means unfortunately, it's a little bit more difficult, maybe here in January, so apologies on that, but but at least we can say, okay, we got the green section, if there's some, you know, columbarium maybe aside, okay, we've got that. Now, we've got, you know, kind of that next section of gray. Maybe talking about those, there's some, some unanimity, but basically, the spread isn't too far away. And then, you know, as we kind of go, go down. And then, the other priority, the other thing is the priorities, the relative priorities, and so Megan put in kind of the averages on the right side there, so you can see the average doesn't mean anything, because obviously, you know, if one of you says it's a four and one of you says a one, well, that averages, you know, whatever, two point two, or whatever. That doesn't really help, but, you know, in the conversation, but at least it gets the ball rolling to have one way of trying to understand where the four of you sit, so the purpose of this, again, I don't, my own preference, and just to repeat what I said in December, I, I don't think I, I know as individuals, as, as select board members, I'm sure you want to make sure that, you know, your, your, your thoughts are well-considered, and I'm sure they will be. The purpose, but, but it's kind of, this is, the idea of this is to really set a broad ranking as opposed to a specific ranking. And, and I don't want you to think that perhaps if, just looking at this, that, you know, if diesel fuel holding tanks was, you know, a little bit higher for you than what, you know, it's, it's all relative. And, and I'm not saying I'll discard what your thoughts are, but obviously, there's this kind of a stratification, and as we get to it, this is just kind of a a very broad brush we're painting on this, so I, I don't think we need to be I wouldn't, or I would urge you not to be too specific, I guess, and, and if there's questions or disagreements, that's a great time to, to talk it out, yeah.
So, this is a five-year capital improvement plan? So, if we say something is necessary, are we saying it's necessary in the next five years?
I think it's saying it's necessary as immediately as you can fund it.
Which is, sort of, we don't know, because we don't see the budget to know what kind of money we've got.
Right. So, it's, right, it's, that's why it's the ranking of how, how, how important is this relatively to the board? So, that way, I can say, oh, jeez, I really want to fund diesel hold, oh, okay, diesel holding tanks, about road repairs and paving, okay, every one of you said one on those.
Right.
That, that's a priority, so it's easy.
Five million dollars or one million, five hundred, you know, I mean, that's sort of hard.
Yeah, right.
Then, well, then there's the next question, which is what can you afford? So, then you have to put some trust in, in, in me to make sure I'm not going to bankrupt you in, in, in the first budget you see from me. And consequently, that there's some sort of thought process.
We still have the way to say, wait a minute.
Absolutely.
No matter what we're doing, I guess I, I'm
You're the boss.
I don't want to have you feel like we've given you permission and, and okay on items. But without seeing the whole budget picture.
No, I understand. Try, listen, I, I
What you want, and, and I want to try to, we all, I think, want to work and get there.
Yeah.
I also think that without seeing a whole budget in context, it's sometimes hard to know.
So, I understand, yeah, I understand completely, yeah.
I've got a, I've got a question with regard to the diesel fuel holding tank. Is that to replace the existing tank that's there because of the age?
Yes.
You know, and I'm going to say again, because I'm just that kind of guy. I lobbied, I lobbied at the time, you know, that why build your own diesel fuel station? When you can buy your diesel fuel probably at a better price, because they sell more of it at a time right over at the Camden Highway Garage. I mean, our police department is over there. And they burn a fair amount of gasoline in the run of a year. Our school system buys their fuel over there. And the only thing that I had heard at the time was that it's a little bit out of our way to go there to fill up. Well, you know, I mean, if you're looking at spending you know, a hundred thousand dollars to replace, and I don't even know what that number is that we'd be talking. But if we're looking at spending a hundred thousand dollars to replace a tank, you know, you can drive quite a ways on a hundred thousand dollars to go get fuel, you know, that's a half a mile across the town line. That's just my two thoughts. Does, does anybody know what that dollar value is, Jonathan or Megan?
Do you have it open, Megan?
I don't remember. I don't.
Is it in the sheet?
No. I caught it out so that I could make room for this.
I guess that's my only comment, was that, you know, it's I wasn't really in favor of doing it then, because we already had someone that bought in a far greater volume of diesel fuel for many different organizations. And I think we could get, we could buy better because of that, and we'd be saving money for not replacing the existing structure, but I'll fight that battle another day.
It's a fifty thousand, Mark.
Yeah.
Fifty, yeah. Yep.
And we, by the way, all said it was deferrable. So, it doesn't seem like you want to spend any money on it.
Well, it's going to be coming up eventually, because I think they only have a life expectancy. I mean, above ground is better than in the ground, but the life expectancy is still probably twenty years, and I think that's probably been there fifteen, maybe. So, it's coming.
Yeah. And the, the date on for replacing, replacement is twenty-six on that? Oh, it says it on there. What am I saying? Megan's already got it on there. I'm sorry, I'm wasting my breath, but, yeah, so there's, there's, you know, fifty grand, you know, four years out, three years out, I guess, at this point.
And, and we don't have anything at this point, do we?
In terms of a reserve, no.
Yeah, see, so there you go. You know, that's, that's fifty that we've got to come up with. You know, it's not going to happen.
Unless we decide to use Camden's fuel, that's
Right.
an option.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I guess, like I said, I mean, I, I understand the convenience of having the tank right there, because they can fill up, they can go in and rest or do whatever.
Well, and for heavy equipment, with, I mean, you're not going to want to be driving your excavator over to Camden to fill it up, right? I mean, I'm assuming it goes for a lot of our
It's, you know, your dump trucks, your plows, you know, your, your diesel-equipped vehicles. And
Earthmoving, earthwork. I mean, stuff that doesn't drive it on the road.
I mean, all I'm saying is that, that fifty thousand, they're going to want in five years. And we either have, are funding it rather aggressively or put it off another additional five years and, and do a little spoonfuls of, of funding over the next ten.
So, that, I would, I mean, if we are talking about a five-year plan, then it is necessary in the next five years to spend money on that. We can't just let that tank rot and leak. I mean, that's
For me, the reason why I put deferrable, I mean, just to go back to that, is, is that I, I saw the values of the ones, I mean, kind of go back to your, your question, Denise. I mean, I looked at the ones that I was looking at putting one on and saying, there's no way we can afford to do all of this, you know? And that's, that's where fours came in for me, you know?
Yeah, me too.
Somewhat right in the back of my head, what, what were my num, what the numbers were. I wasn't adding them up, but I I knew what the road repairs was going to cost, and then I knew we didn't have much left beyond, so
I was thinking, I'm not sure you could put a one after anything after that.
No, agreeing.
Yeah, yeah, sad to say.
If we sort of get an update from Mike or somebody that could evaluate the, the condition of the existing tank and see if it is indeed a five-year thing, or you know, maybe it's three, maybe it's eight or ten. But just, just sort of to solidify that, so that we know that going into But just, just sort of to solidify that so that we know that going into. You know, the budget season.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Because then I think that helps us really say, okay, yeah, we do have to start poking away. Five thousand, ten thousand, whatever, because it does have to be placed in five years or. If Mike can evaluate it and say, no, I think we could get ten years out of it, then I think we would all be more comfortable. Saying, great, then let's think, let's, let's revisit this next year.
And the other thing is the fifty thousand this year would be. Sixty in five years, who knows?
Right, true, right.
Who said this was going to be a short meeting?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's good to have these discussions and.
Absolutely.
Obviously helps John from a budget perspective and helps us. Ask questions we don't always get a chance to ask and talk about, so.
Right.
Um, let's see.
So I have this category that I, I don't mean to, I mean, we can decide when we want to talk about it, but the building question. How many buildings do we need to expand? How many, how much storage space do we need? How much staff space do we need? How many sleeping rooms do we need? I mean, looking, you know, sort of stepping back with our different buildings and looking at that holistically as a town. Um, which is a little bit different than putting a number.
Have that, yeah. Do we have that Megan, like kind of broken out? Is that like? Facility, even though I know Opera House is in there, but is there a category for? Uh, I can hide everything out so that you can see just those ones. Cause you're right Denise, when we start looking, we've got public safety, safety expansion, public works expansion. Sleeping rooms at the fire station. We've got.
Yeah, and each of them independently has a really good reason for what they want to do. But I'm just thinking, we, we want to look at it town wide. What do we need as a town?
And, and let me just, I mean, we, I think. Not to jump to the end of that conversation, but you know, I, I didn't want to be too presumptuous about any of those needs. And certainly not having been through a budget process with, you know, the five of you. Um, but you know, you do, you add it up and you say, boy, there's got to be a better way. You know, there's got to be a better way here to accomplish all of these needs at the same time. Um, you know, to me, I felt like we really needed to understand the space needs of each building. The, the shortcomings and I didn't feel as though. Entering the capital planning process that I had answers that could put them into one pocket. So that, you know, you could all look at that at one time. Uh, but my hope would be out of this budget that we would start to find the answers. Whether we bring somebody in to do a space needs assessment or an architect to, to look at, you know, design options. Um, again, in a very passive way, not an active, let's draw up the plans and, you know, have a vote in June to, to do whatever that is. But, but you're absolutely right. I mean, there's, the lines are crossing all over the place, intersections of, of all of these different needs and. And, and the one thing that's not on this list, but, but we're also talking about is that, um, you know, water resource recovery facility. Um, which, which some call a sewer, uh, treatment plant, but it's a water resource recovery facility. That's what the name is. Um, and, and that's also something that has to be thought of and considered as well. So that's a new need, but. But maybe there's some, some areas where it overlaps. I mean, certainly in public, the public works, you know, area, that's where. Um, you know, Andy and Randy are working out of right now and, and there's their own space, but there's needs there. Um, so. You know, we're going to have some answers on that as, as we get the study back from. You know, tha- that's completed in February and then, um, that will have one, one small piece of this bigger puzzle, but.
So that's the engineering on the, on the sewer treatment, I mean, the wastewater or whatever.
Yeah, right. WRF, W R F. That's what, that's what I, just trying to say WRF, otherwise I'm going to, yeah. Um, and that's why I put it as a two on, and that's why I put all these as twos because they're, I think they're necessary. Um, obviously the West Rockport Fire Station is its, its own thing, but. Um, the, I looked at them as, as necessary to investigate next steps. Um, and then concurrently, things are going on with RES, the WRF. Um, West Rockport Fire Station and, and hopefully we can get some answers before. You know, um, we've really committed ourselves too far in a direction which might. Not allow us to get the maximum benefit, you know, as a community. That's my hope.
Ambulance space as well, if that is where we end up heading.
And some. And, and they still say what's wrong with considering a consolidated effort at putting it at the RES if that would be something the town. Would vote for. And consolidate all those buildings into one location that would have. Meeting rooms, sleeping quarters, take the large idea of the West Rockport Fire Station and put it there and just build a little one over here. They've been doing fine with once, one bay. Why do we need four? So, and you could put it over there and then you could have all of that in one space and add parking and have the space and still keep. The park if that's what comes of it. Those are my thoughts. I mean, I'm not saying that's what the town residents would decide is the best use of that space, but.
That's a good option. I mean, that's a good.
Good central location.
Right. And I've been getting a lot of pushback saying I want it to be a green space. I want this, I want that. Nobody's, I'm not getting any. Anything that I've been getting back is not, let's develop it, but if, if the part that was the school becomes. Town facilities, you sell off the town hall building, you could keep the other one if it was necessary. Move the location, you'd have room to put in the wastewater, whatever you called it and. You could redesign and rebuild out that park in a more safe environment and, and then they still get your green space. And in the summer, you could still put up a screen maybe for. Design the parking lot in a way that allows for that drive in to still be in that area. I mean, that's what I've been thinking. Right. Just my two thoughts and now the whole world knows.
Eric, can you just tell us, um, is the zero?
That was why.
Know how to rate, okay, all right, that's fine. To, uh, rate the zero, that's all.
Yeah, that, that was why on those buildings, because I think as a, as an entity, as a consolidated effort, how do you? Piecemeal this together and just keep throwing money at old, but. Old buildings to try to do this and try to do that when you could just say, boom, here, start over. Plan the expansion and figure it out all at once and just do it and then sell off the old, the other buildings for the thing and just rebuild a smaller fire station out here or West Rockport. We, uh, instead of, instead of a big one.
We lost an opportunity a while ago that had been mentioned when Northeast was looking for a building. Um, you know, we could have done what you had said, Eric, and built over there at the RES. We could have had the library moved to where the town office is and. You know, plenty of parking buildings, fairly good size, you know, Northeast could have taken our fire station over. Uh, for an agreement of either no charges for X amount of years or, or they could buy it from us, et cetera. And, uh, we could build over there, you know, the fire station. Could use the intersection to gain access to about any area of town much better than they can from coming out where they do now.
Yeah, that was my thought.
Yeah, I would think it's good for.
And I don't disagree that, that the fire station needs to be replaced in West Rockport. I just want to make that clear. But it's being, it being designed. With a, I, I believe my twenty percent believes that it's being done with an assumption that we're going to have our own. EMS service in the future. You know, that may or may not fruition. You know, does it need to be four bays? Can it be three? You know? There's a lot of things yet to be finalized, but, uh. Anyway.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of concerns about that, that residents are just worried about the size of that and the sort of.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that we wouldn't, couldn't utilize that design. But instead of putting it out here, put it, design a, a town hall that's like maybe two stories with a, a central. Meeting room and then a police station and a, and a fire station. And if there's not enough room for the police station, then they could take over the existing fire station. Put the bigger fire station in the better location, which has better road access and just put a smaller one out here. And you're only talking a two mile difference anyway, right? It's like two miles. So I'm not saying that we don't necessarily need the four, this extra space in the idea that we're going to need EMS and we may need. Sleeping quarters. I'm just saying, we need to evaluate and look at it as a whole and see what the residents feel. Is the best use of the RES before we go and say, well, let's throw a million dollars at this building and seven hundred fifty thousand at that one and two and a half million out here and. I mean, because it doesn't help to piecemeal it. If we, if through three years down the road, then they all, then we decide, okay, well, let's, let's do that at RES spot. And then we've spent all this money that we couldn't used.
All right, we're putting band, we're putting Band-Aids on things and replacing roofs and doing whatever. When if, if the end result in five years is you need a bigger building, then. Where, where, where do you plan for that now versus putting all this money towards our aging? Buildings and then to your point, Eric, we end up in the same place anyway.
Right.
John, you mentioned that maybe there are people who could help us evaluate our space needs.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, you can, you know, circulate RFPs that, you know, there are, there are firms that'll come in and they'll, they'll look at, you know, the different. Pieces of, of your operation and, and, and look at, you know, how many offices do you need? How much storage space, et cetera? Uh, you know, it could be an architectural firm that comes in and looks at it. It could be, you know, their engineers that do this sort of work. Uh, in hope we had, we had a firm come in and do an, an assessment of our. What was the old school there and our town office was there and what's the best way to move forward? And ultimately end up, we move forward and, and ended up doing the, a renovation of that building and, and, yeah, they're still there and it's, it's worked out pretty well for them. Uh, you know, I think that would be wise for us to look at all these buildings and have eyes wide open, third party. What, what makes sense now knowing in this new world of building and construction prices, what are we looking at? Um, you know, and way, that way you can weigh a dollars and cents number as opposed to an emotional appeal. You know, for me saying I've, you know, I have no room for my, my paper boxes and, you know, woe is me. Um, you know, I think, you know, we can, we can really put a dollars and cents number for you. It makes sense.
Not, not to dwell on this much longer, but why don't you find out what it might cost, have somebody review it. And put it in the budget and if we get to a point we need to cut it, we cut it. If we don't and can keep it, we'll keep it.
The woe is me will come if you cut it and then I'll start crying, but I'll, I'll work through it, Mark.
There's probably a lot of that.
I have a feeling. That's okay. That's, that's how it works. Good plan.
Odd. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
No, I, no, I think that's a good idea. Saying, I, I just, I want a case made for each one, but then I want backing up. What does the town need? I mean, we're a town of thirty five hundred people.
Right.
And I know it swells a little in the summertime, but still.
Right.
I mean, look at, I mean, look at, you know, Camden as an example, I, you know, as much as I love to talk about them lately. Um, you know, they have one fire station. It's downtown. They have to travel a fair distance in heavy traffic to get anywhere. Um, so I think maybe to Eric's point, do we really need to? You know, can you build one and have everything go out of it? I mean, it's still. You know, square mileage wise, we're, we're the same.
Is that right? Yeah.
Pardon?
That is, we are the same square mileage as.
I think we're both twenty five plus or minus square miles. I think they may have more water bodies of water. Or larger bodies of water than we do, but it's, I think in total, it's the same.
But they're sort of as spread out as we are.
Yeah, I mean, you know. And they do, like I said, I mean, they come out of downtown, so.
And I know this is not anything we would start to talk about anytime soon, but the idea of. Somehow combining the, uh, fire services between the two towns and the way we've done the. Police, I know, I'm not, I'm not.
There we go. Last time, the last time that got sprung on the old fire chief, everybody was going to quit. And because nobody ever talked to them about it ahead of time. So that's not.
Saying that's on anybody's agenda.
No, that's been good to, to even spring out there now because that, that'll grow like wildfire.
Well, it came up at Knox County, um. Well, because when you start talking about fire and EMS.
Right.
You have to start talking about regionalization and in some ways it makes more sense for Camden and Rockport. To combine rather than trying to do a whole countywide effort. But that's, that's where. People who. Get paid a lot of money to analyze and determine and, but anyway, I, I, that's just, it also goes to the buildings though, is. It's all peace.
Got to have a building to work out of, right? I mean, that's the, it's, yeah.
And how many buildings do you need to work out? You know, this.
Right.
Absolutely. And the one, no, I'll stop talking. I was just going to say, the one thing I would just add to, to your point Denise too, is. The population growth over the last ten years, that ten percent number. That's, that's the thing that kind of perks my ears up. And I don't know that we're going to continue to see, and this is kind of a bigger picture conversation just as we're talking about this, but.
Yeah.
You know. We've had population growth here, you know, the MBNA boom kind of, kind of pooped things up a little bit there. Um, but you know, if this is part of a trend, if we're, if we're going in a direction. Um, and this isn't kind of a, you know, a blip on the map. Um, that will, I think a, a lot of our conversations change, but especially that, that infrastructure buildings related because. You know, you do, you look at it and how many, how many code officers do you need if you go from thirty six hundred to four thousand? How many more? You know, how many police officers do you need? How many, how many more clerks do you need? You, it does become. You go from that small town to that town that's, whoa, that we're, you know, and it happens in a very quick window and. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not projecting that anyway. That's not why I put it on the list here, but, um, I just. For me as a, as a local yokel here, uh, I will say I've felt. There's, there's been a, a very change. There's been a change here over the last ten years. And so. It's, um, it's, it's just, it's time to reassess, you know, and, and let's just make sure where we're, where we are. So.
Yeah.
Anyway.
All right. What's ne, what's next on our list of discussion topics?
Well, um. Uh, yeah, I mean, you can handle this anyway. What, you wanted to talk about the gray areas? Do you want to, you want to go by category? Do you want to go one by one through? Do you want to?
Let's just talk about the library reserves real quick. I think we can discuss those pretty easy.
Okay.
I mean, the building's brand new. I mean, what is the life expectancy on these things like the live, the HVAC fifteen years usually or an elevator? Ten to twelve? I don't know, you know? What, you know, how far do we really need? Do we need to be looking in the next five years to? Worry about replacing an HVAC unit that should last fifteen to twenty years or?
Well, definitely being this year to take a break. On library, I mean, I, to put stuff in a library reserve.
Well. Yeah, but no, I mean.
I know at some point you've got to start doing it, but.
Right.
That's, that's like, you know, the, the tank up there at the, at the highway garage, you know, potentially. You know, we've got a three year window to come up with fifty thousand dollars.
Right. So probably it should have been on in five years ago.
Right. I mean, it's much easier to put two or three thousand dollars a year for ten years. Um. You know, we, we probably ought to fund a, a much smaller amount. For things up there. Maybe not for everything, but just one, one pie, if you will, to draw from for specific things. But.
So what do we have, what do we have on this list, Megan, for that? I only saw the parking. Did we have other? I think I took, I think I took the other reserve.
I think I took the other reserve uh, stuff off because there weren't any ratings for them. Because it's something that we had just planned on doing annually, but I think the overall investment for that stuff was. Six, seven thousand, maybe. I mean, because we are looking at. Fifteen, twenty years to start putting that away now. It was like. I wanna say like two thousand for the HVAC. It was like. Another one or two thousand for the um, elevator. I mean, like Mark said, putting it away now is gonna be a much smaller portion than. Kicking the can down the road. It also opens us up. For what we've seen with our other buildings is all this deferred maintenance that never happened because once it's time for it to happen. We don't have the money for it to happen because we didn't put make that small one thousand, two thousand dollar investment every year.
What I was wondering, there's a lot of consistency. You know, are are we doing this for every building? Are we putting aside reserves for all these different categories for every one of our town buildings? And if we are, then great, we should. Of course, do that for the library, but.
We haven't been, which is why I think we're in the position that we are in with some of our buildings.
Wait, and and there are some reserves that we put away that we just don't ever seem to spend, I think. Uh, which is also a bit frustrating.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, there was quite a bit of money in the town office building reserve, but. In the last few years, we put in a generator, we replaced the carpeting and stuff in the clerk's office. We painted, um, we did some brickwork outside, so that all of that pretty much wiped. Whatever had been saved, we had a boiler go and had to replace that. And fortunately enough, we had that money in the reserve account to do that, so there was. Wasn't necessarily a budgetary impact at the time when that work needed to be done.
Don't forget the sewer line.
Yeah, the sewer. Is do we do we need to say library reserve eight million different lines or can we just say? Library building reserve boom, one line.
I mean, I think it's fine to put it in one line. I think Ben only separated it out, so there'd be some clear distinction on what it was for. But if we were gonna create a reserve for the library building, we wouldn't create four different ones. We would.
One, okay.
And put it in there.
Yeah, I think if we do that, it would be actually better because then we can just say. We're just saving money for future repairs and then as whatever comes up, the money can be there.
Yeah, if if you've got the things that are listed that it can be used for. You know, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And because the way it's broken out on this CIP list doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna exactly mirror that. In like a reserve account, it could. Be what we're gonna say, we know that we have this project, it's gonna cost this much. Over the next ten years, we're putting X amount in the reserve to help with this.
I mean, so you know, some of these things that we're talking about now. And and I'm. Again, I'm just, I'm using any example. You know, I'm sure there'll be a reserve line for a police car. Or a fire truck or a highway truck. And it will be. It'll be X amount of dollars. In order for us to uh. Uh, still maintain some dollar value going into each of those reserves. But yet fund some of these other ones like for the library. Maybe we lessen. By, you know, five percent each of those. You know, so the highway gets five percent less in their reserve, the fire gets five percent less of what they're asking. The police get five percent less than what they're asking. And. Overall, it's not much, but it is enough potentially to fund. A portion of the reserve. That we're working at for the library, so we really, we're not. You know, we're maintaining a level line, but. I don't know if that makes any sense, but.
The only problem with like. Uh, singling it towards like vehicle schedules and stuff like that is that. We can fairly well estimate what vehicles are gonna cost and. By putting those reserves in and keeping that level, it keeps us from having those upward and downward shifts.
Well.
We have to buy a fire truck. We're not buying a fire truck this year, but we're only gonna spend thirty thousand dollars on a police cruiser. It avoids those shifts.
Well, all it means is that you may go an extra year without buying. The police car, or you may go an extra year without buying the fire truck. It's only extending it one more year from the time you want to buy it. Potentially. I mean, you're you're not gonna, you're not gonna not fund a fair amount of each of those reserves. But you might lessen it enough that it might cause you to put it out one more year. You know. You know, and I was speaking with the chief today, the blue chief. And I mean, they're not putting as many miles on their cars as they used to. And the cars that they have are only. Uh, they've got one of the three that's under a hundred thousand and two. Two of the others that are around a hundred to a hundred and fifteen or somewhere. You know, it's a lot of miles. But can it go another year potentially? If it needed to. You know, we we've got some. We've got some decisions to make.
Well, I guess my only thing about the library is as long as we're doing that for every one of our buildings, having a reserve. Uh, which I think is a good idea. I just think there should be consistency across all the buildings. Um, that. Have a reserve going and maybe that's more for some buildings than others, depending on their age. Um, because in general, it's a good concept. It's just doesn't appear that we've done that consistently.
Right, yeah, it doesn't.
Easy to do when you have a new building. I mean, it's easy to set up, right? But it's hard to fund. Hard to fund, easy to set up, right? So. And and I um, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look through your packet as of yet, but uh, you know, Megan and I spent some time and and Monday night, we'll talk about the reserve policy. And and I think.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah. So if we don't have to talk about, obviously, we can talk about it Monday night, but. You know, the idea of of these reserves and trying to simplify and make them. As reflective of what you want to see occurring in the community or how what we want to be funding. And as and make them as flexible as we can to hit as many of these needs. You know, like you said, one reserve for for a building or a library building reserve. You know, it's, you know, it's HVAC, it's elevator, it's um, you know, brick repointing. It's all of those things. And then you can have a conversation. Um, you know, I I can understand Ben's perspective, uh, but you can have a conversation. Well. I'm not as hot to trot on the on the HVAC, but I really think we need to be get ahead of the building, you know, the 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 brick repointing, you know, there's. There's multiple reasons and then that gives um, you know, flexibility to staff to fix the needs as they occur. And and that's one thing, the elevator. We do, we weren't aware we were gonna have to jump on to the warranty side of that this year, and so we've had to sign an agreement with, I think it's Otis. To cover our elevator over there and it's a word spending a little bit less on that, but. In return, we're gonna put a little bit, I I'm gonna propose to put a little bit more in the reserve for that because. That's actual money that if there's a repair, we use it and we have it rather than paying it out to Otis on the potential that someday we. You know, we may have an issue, that money's gone, whereas we'll at least hold that reserve and we'll have that money. Kind of self insuring ourselves in some respects. Um, so that's, you know, that's down the pike, but um, I I think simpler, simpler is is a good good approach.
Yep.
All right. Audio video upgrades?
I don't know, I'm just, that's what I'm looking at on the screen.
All right, audio video upgrades it is.
Well, he said it was specifically to help integrate these kind of calls with. The streaming and I believe, right? Is that what we were talking about integrating it so that we can do? More so when remote meetings happen, it's better.
Yeah.
I think that's part of it.
More computer power.
More power, yes. And and I will say we are so, obviously, I wrote a one on this. Um, we we're gonna be making some upgrades this month. And actually, the next, how about wait, next week, Megan? Is it next week? Yeah, so I I probably after we spend that money, I would say I'd probably put a two on this for me. Uh, because I think we'll be able to accomplish this where uh. Some of us will be can can be at in the meeting room, some of us can be on Zoom, you know, um. If Mark's on Graham and Anne, we could have him right there with us, um, you know, Denise, you could be on the slopes. Um, I could be a Rockport Harbor apparently from from the view of this, but um, you know, we have options and I think it's important. Just that we we have that flexibility. I mean, Eric, when you were in Tennessee, I mean, that I maybe you don't wanna be in the meeting, but. At least we could have pulled that off.
Right. Well, I I mean, I think that that's a. Wise investment. Was there other video au- audio upgrades we needed in order to be able to host? Additional events? I thought that that was some part of that too, but maybe not.
I think the next step of this will be uh, putting the equipment upstairs and leaving it upstairs, so we're not moving equipment from downstairs to upstairs. Uh, which we would also make that equipment uh, as a rental. To whoever's renting the facility. So it'd be a way for us to make money as well.
Okay.
So that's live, both live stream and Zoom could be accomplished upstairs then as well as.
Well, and that. And I'll and I'll jump back into our space needs, and I think I've said this before, that we ought we ought to have. It's not as convenient. But we ought to have all of our meetings take place at the Opera House. And then that frees up that whole Richardson room for. Whatever your heart desires.
All right, so do we, since we're on an Opera House um. Topic, do you wanna just look at the Opera House category, see if there's anything else we didn't? Cover and then.
Balcony seats are in there, the concession equipment's in there. I think there's the money for the stove's already set aside, so you don't need to talk.
What are we thinking, Megan, on that concession stand and equipment price wise?
So basically, I just, uh, when I put the pricing together, it was. To construct a room. Obviously has to have special ventilation in it for uh, fire code. Um, and then basically just starting out with some basic equipment, so. We would need some sort of cooler for beverages, uh, popcorn machine. It wasn't anything like extravagant, it was basically just. Getting us a place where we could do it and then as. We moved through it, we could add more equipment to it.
And that looks like it's slated for. Not this budget year, but next budget years.
Right.
Balcony seating. That's just replacing the seating we have today. Which are probably. What, a hundred years old, maybe? Maybe not that old.
By looking at them, I would say they're.
Pretty funky.
Okay. And then we had painting green room and new furniture.
I kinda like the green.
I know, right? I mean, I think that's a nice, I think in my eyes, that's a nice to have, not an urgent, but. You know, one of those things that.
I I think what it goes to, when you look at the Opera House as a potential renter.
Yes, agree.
Walk in, the whole thing looks tired.
Yes, agree.
Hard to get very excited about it, except. It's nice space and I understand it has amazing acoustics. But it doesn't. You know, walking in with my son and they were looking for a place to have a wedding reception and they'd never been in the Opera House before, and so we walked in and it was just like.
It doesn't wow, it doesn't wow you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's the challenge if you wanna.
Yeah, I agree. If we want, if we really wanted to get it to be a money making facility, which we should, I mean. Obviously, COVID has. Kiboshed a lot of our plans, but if we wanted to make it a money making facility, we're gonna have to put the money into it. And I agree on the concessions because that makes you a lot of money, especially if you're. Can get a bartender in there to serve beer.
It's a bar, forget the popcorn, just the bar.
That's right.
Yeah. So I think that's where these costs come down is what? How do you? Have a facility that's attractive? To potential renters and and what level of investment are we willing to make for that? And what do we need? I mean, I think that's. Did I see that we're painting the painting of the auditorium too is that's already underway? Is that? Is that on the underway section?
I don't know. I know it was discussed at some point, but I don't see it.
I thought it was at the very top.
I thought, yeah, I thought it was on there too. Oh, there we go, yeah.
Unanimity.
So we all said, that'd be nice.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, here we go, okay.
I I mean, I think a lot of the.
Yes, that shows underway or right? Or what is that?
I was just, I mean, I mean, I think a lot of this, the hope would be that. What the reason why, you know, what I put out was the concession stand really was something that we would need. To make money immediately, right? To try to get that infusion of cash from the town side of things. And and the the balcony seats are important. The reason why I I maybe put them a little bit lower. Same with the auditorium was that I felt as though that provides us a little bit of time to to have that. Friend, you know, you know, supporters of the Opera House or, you know, that group to organize and, you know, we've. We're very much in the in the nation stages of trying to. A Megan kind of managing the fiscal side of that of that Opera House. But you know, having the 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 energy from the community to support it. You know, that's where the balcony seats, selling those balcony seats and selling, you know, sponsor, you know, whatever that may be to try to. Make that room happen. It would be great if there was outside um. Support to make, financial support to make that happen. You know, that's that's a much more likely scenario, I think, than taking money away from, say, road construction for, you know, to pay the pay the inside of the auditorium.
That was talked to, I think, uh, talked about too, I think, back when Doug was on the board, you know, about having a. Um, a nonprofit formed where money could be donated. You know, towards the Opera House and such. Uh, things to be done. Back a question. A question on the concession stand and equipment. Who would run that?
We have a staff attendant. Uh, at the facility anytime there's an event happening anyway. So uh, my thought was as we're starting, it would be that staff attendant that would be responsible.
So we. Okay, now I, where I'm going, I guess it's like, okay, when you build a sidewalk, everybody's. All great to have one, but nobody ever talks about maintenance, you know, what are you gonna do in the winter? So that's what I'm, why I'm asking this, are we gonna have to have other people? Or will we potentially have to have more people? To do multiple things.
My hope is that eventually we have drummed up so much business at the Opera House that we do need. A full time person or do need more staff. I mean. To me, that would be the ultimate goal is that we're so busy that the part time staff can no longer handle it.
Yeah, and it it might be something to think too, that you also could lease out that business to someone.
You take a cut.
Right, and they they get to take a portion, we get a little bit. And we and we can just. Wash our hands of it. And let them.
I don't know what happened at the um, the Christmas, you know, the Don Campbell. You know, they've served wine there. I think that was, was that flatbread? Bobby Morgan was the.
Yeah.
So we sort of outsourced, I think, that for that event. Well.
Well, they did that noble over in Camden. I mean, they used to have someone that that ran the the grill or the. Concession stand over there. I don't know what they do now, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the issues for the opera house right now is because of COVID. People have sort of lost touch with the opera. I mean, the community has lost touch with the opera house as a. As a benefit and a facility and something that they enjoy. And in order to form the kind of nonprofit, you have to have people excited about that venue. And until we, I love Megan, I mean, until we get it busy again, which.
Right. Who knows when that's going to be, but.
Yeah, but we have good people, you know, we're the right people working on it. It's just um. And then we have to decide what level of investment, if it's just getting a concession stand so we can raise some cash. And then help fund the rest of these. I mean, I agree with John, we definitely put balcony seating. Lower because you can fill the main, you don't need that balcony really. To use the space.
Oh, and like John said, it's really important to get the community invested back into the opera house and. I think that will slowly happen, the more that we do there is that people will see it as a possibility.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, the Don Campbell event was just really fun. It was a great, great community event. So we, do we need to do anything more on any of these? We have our ratings.
Well, I didn't hear any like disagreement on where these were, so I kinda just put where they were as the rating.
Yeah, cuz I think these will really come into play. I guess the next piece of this is as we go through budget, right? So. Then if John comes back and we suddenly see that he wants to put ten thousand dollars towards balcony seating, we can say. Well, no, our agreement was, you know, we wanted to put funds here, there or wherever, so. I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to discuss any of them, but.
With the big thermometer outside the opera house, you know, that big thermometer that says we need money?
Or raising money, yeah.
These opera house things, uh are they? Were they brought forward by the, our new manager up there or is it just something that's been going on or do we have any input from them?
When I uh started being the department head for the opera house, I went through the opera house. I talked to Drew some about um people that had inquired about renting it, but didn't. Ended up not renting it to try to figure out why they didn't rent it. Not so much the balcony seating, but definitely the painting of the green room and. Um, the auditorium area. I mean, it is an old building, but that auditorium area is very weathered and it could stand. Some touch up and I think if we can make it more inviting and more pleasing when people first walk through the building. That will have better luck uh renting the facility. So that's where a lot of this came from.
I know Nancy Albertson, you know, the concession stand and equipment, you know, was. I think partly her recommendation based on what she's learning from other venues, that that's. You know, a big part of how you make money at these events.
Right, and when I met with the Camden Opera House manager, he said that. He doesn't really make money on ticket sales, it's the concession sales that he makes the money on.
I'm not surprised by that.
Yeah. And so that's interesting because that, you know, that's in the budget, not that I'm looking to add things in this upcoming budget year, but. We've got that put off for another year. Um, the concession stand, if we think that that's what we wanna do is start making money, that's the way to start making a little money off the opera house. Should that item be moved up at all?
So I really did this because we're in so much uncertainty right now with COVID. Uh, we've had two events canceled for January. Um, it's not, I mean, none of us have a prediction meter, but. I mean, it's not, we're not in a good place right now and uh COVID has certainly hurt. Uh, the operations at the opera house. So you have to look, is isn't an investment that is just gonna sit there because we can't rent the facility? Or isn't an investment that we'll be able to start using right away, so. I guess that's why I originally put it off is cuz we just don't know where we are right now.
And does it take any time to build this or is this just something you can sort of put in within a week and be ready to go? Because when the opera house is shut down is a good time to be.
It would take some time to meet like the fire marshal specifications and uh to get the equipment here, but outside of that. Constructing the actual. Structure wouldn't be that intensive.
Kind of fire marshal, we talk, code are we talking about if you're just doing a. Popcorn machine, are you thinking a grill too or something?
Well, I mean, if we're gonna construct it, then we have to look at what the long-term plans are gonna be. We have to have some sort of. Uh exhaust, even with the popcorn, cuz the popcorn puts off steam and all that, so we'd have to have some way uh to get it out of that area. So if we're doing that already, do it once and do it right instead of putting money into it and then having to do it.
All right, what's next? Um, is there anything else that we need, want to cover? Anyone else have anything on their list that they were dying to cover this evening? John, Megan, anything else on your list you wanted us to review? I mean, it looks like we're, while we may not have all been in alignment for these. I mean, it doesn't look like there are too many that are completely off.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think the main, I guess the main thing I was coming out of tonight was as long as. You know, i- i- if everyone is, I guess, accepting of the fact of, you know, I might have a two, you might have a three, you know, and and. That there's, there's the distinction there, but but until there's a dollar amount attached to it. You know, there's nothing here that stands out to the four of you that says, whoa, 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 this is completely out of line with where we are, but.
Parking I might raise is I just, as Megan just buy that cuz we've got twos and fours. I. I put a four because as we know, the minute this first capital improvement plan went out, we got the neighborhood just. Of the woodwork over the idea of expanding the parking. And John and I talked and I emailed because my husband owns um. A piece of property up there with his wood shop, so he was on the email list where everybody was getting all up in arms. I don't think they reached out to the town yet, but at that point, well, they'd reach out to John, so. Anyway, I with John uh sent them an email saying. You know, we're not gonna do anything this next year with library parking, just calm down, this is, we have a ways to go. But I worried about putting a two, which would be, is that necessary? For this next year. Now, this is a couple of years, if they pay attention to the dates, I guess we have good cover. I just was a little worried politically about showing it on our capital improvement plan. Um, as necessary, cuz if it's necessary, how long do you wait to do it?
Good point.
No, that's kind of my my zero is there too cuz I think this this needs to go as a. Uh we we just can't piecemeal it together. We need a solution for the area, not. One there and. Maybe we'll pull the parking lot here or maybe we won't and I, we really need. An outside company to come in and evaluate the parking needs of the area and give us a plan. It's not something that we can do internally. I know nothing about parking other than I hate parallel parking. So beyond that. Somebody in town that knows about part engineer and parking, I I really think we need to look at some outside company to come in and tell us. This is what your best option is on the area. So if we're spending any money on parking, I'd rather do that and have a actual plan. Rather than a parking committee and this and a couple piecemeal here and somebody trying from the planning board to figure it out over here and. Economic development doing this idea, it's it's too piecemeal for my brain to comprehend.
Yeah.
I I need something solid on this topic to make any kind of decision.
There was a recent newspaper article that both Camden and Rockland have got these parking committees and have these big plans for sort of some pay parking. Bar Harbor's gotten a lot of headlines over there, making several million dollars in parking fees this last summer. And and we're different, but we do, we definitely need to be doing something about parking.
Yeah, and maybe the parking committee may not necessarily be a bad idea, but unless it goes somewhere, then.
But it's dead in the woods, not doing anything.
Right, spending ten thousand dollars to actually have a valid plan that might work. Is a lot better than trying to piecemeal a bunch of people just that don't know, understand parking. I mean, maybe there are people that understand it. I don't, so.
Well, I think, so we were going to have parking on the agenda on Monday evening. Um, but due to Orion being out of state due to a uh death in the family, I believe, John is what you told me. Um, we will not have that update, but we will move it to February cuz I think it's important that we do have. At least the work of the committee or the task force, I guess technically it was represented so that they can come and kind of talk about what they've done. But I I agree, I mean, I think that parking's gonna be a big, big discussion and I think we can. Do um nothing, we can do everything, we can do something in between, and I think we should first. Use the information and the data that this task force has worked on. If i- if if they've come up with viable solutions, I honestly don't know, I haven't seen anything. Um, but get that information first and then we can go from there.
Yeah, I did, so just so what I did was I did include the map of of the the identified parking areas that. Um, the parking task force pulled together. So I got some of this, some of the stuff that Orion had. And what I did is I put it in the agenda, but. But you know, again, expecting that Orion won't be able to be there and so I I, but I wanted to give you at least a little bit of what I had, so. I guess wet. Wet your palate on 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 the start of the conversation, um but um. There, you know, there has been more work and there was more work really than what. I was really comfortable with kind of putting this part of a packet that goes out to a a broader array of people that includes identifying property owners and and parcels. And locations to potentially purchase and work with for expanded parking. I mean, there's a, there was a work, some work that had gone into that. And I, you know, some of that work is best left for a task force level conversation and and and. And then bring that forward to a proposal to the select board. Some of it really maybe don't wanna have as a select board conversation piece as well, so I didn't really know how far to go. And how much to share, but I wanted to share at least something and um and certainly I can share a little bit more when Orion comes back. Send an email out to everybody and say, okay, this is what we have, at least maybe a memo format, so that way everyone's got everything and we all. Can have the same um understanding working forward, you know.
Okay, sounds good. All right, any others we go through here? I know we've talked a lot about the, many of these in our last couple of meetings. But anything else that anyone wanted to? Discuss this evening? Hearing none. All right, Megan, John, final comments?
Thank you. Thanks for for taking the time to rank these. I mean, I I think, I know it was difficult and it didn't. Maybe necessarily make sense, and I know this is a new process, hopefully it's a little bit easier next year, but I think. Um, this, this will help me greatly, so I.
I think what it did is it helped to spark a lot of good um discussion. About some of these topics that, like I said before, we might not always get a lot of time to talk about them, so. I think if if anything, it helped to spark some of that and get better understanding of some of the items that are on here.
Yep, definitely.
So.
Thanks, everybody.
Great.
All right, thank, thank you all. Have a great rest of your evening.
Have a great night, thanks.